Good afternoon. I am calling to order the Planning Commission regular meeting. It is four thirty on Thursday, July twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June twenty seventh Planning Commission meeting. Are there any corrections, additions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve of the minutes.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes have been approved. This opens the public hearing session of the Planning Commission meeting. The first item on the agenda is the South Point Financial Credit Union rezoning petition. Thank you. City report?
Thank you, Commission members. John Isley, planner at the city of New Ulm. The applicant for this rezoning petition is Jay Gustanzik. He's the CEO of South Point Financial Credit Union. The property owner is South Point Financial Credit Union. The legal description of the property is part of Lot Three, Block Thirty Three, north of Center Street. There's a long meets and bounds description, and that is in your attachment with this packet. The street address is seven eleven North Spring Street, and the request is to rezone the property from RT two, traditional neighborhood, single and two-family residence district, to B two, which is the general business zoning district. Deadline for a decision on this application is August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four. The current land use designation for this property is low-density residential. Surrounding land uses include low-density residential to the north and east, and then to the west business, and then to the south parks and open space. The zoning designation, it's currently RT two, again, traditional neighborhood, single and two-family residence district, and they're requesting to go to B two. Surrounding zoning to the north, south, and east is also RT two, and then to the west, it's B two, the general business district. Currently, the site is vacant with the exception of a private sewer line extending from the South Point Building to North Spring Street. So if you look on our map up here, there is a sewer line roughly going right in here, private sewer line, that serves South Point Financial Credit Union, and then hits a sewer main down here on North Spring Street. Current area uses to the north is single-family residences. To the west, it's South Point Federal Credit Union office, and then to the south is vacant US Highway fifteen, and then New Ulm Community Center and Hansios Park, and then to the east is vacant and single-family residences. We did provide notice in the journal on July thirteenth and to property owners within three hundred and fifty feet of the subject property, and we have not had any comments to date. Site description and use. So the total land area of the property is six thousand four hundred forty-six square feet, or point one four eight acres. The owner is proposing to construct parking stalls directly abutting the alley. You can see it's that dark area that we have on the map here within the red outlined property. The property could also be used for snow storage. Off-street parking stalls for business purposes are not permitted, not a permitted use in the RT two zoning district. They are permitted use in all business zoning districts and for places of public assembly such as churches, schools, et cetera, and residential zoning districts. Land uses in the RT two zoning district are limited primarily primarily to single and two-family residences and their associated uses. A little bit of history on this property, and it's it's an important element of this petition. The property was purchased by MinDOT, Minnesota Department of Transportation, in nineteen fifty-nine for the purpose of reconstructing US Highway fourteen. The property was owned single and two-family residential at the time of the purchase from MinDOT. Since that purchase by the state, two single-family homes have been removed from the property, and it's been used for highway right-of-way ever since then. Again, that property has been vacant ever since they removed the buildings on them. There is a private sewer line that runs through Lot Three in an east-west direction towards North Spring Street. Minnesota Department of Transportation put part of Lot Three, Block Thirty Three, north of Center Street, up for sale this spring. South Point decided to purchase that property and is now proposing five to six parking stalls for employees on the property. Res zoning criteria. So pursuant to Minnesota law established by the Minnesota Supreme Court, decisions on rezoning requests must be based on the consideration of the following criteria. One, whether the proposed rezoning corrects an error in the original zoning or zoning text or map, or two, whether the proposed rezoning addresses a need arising from a changing condition, trend, or fact affecting the subject property and surrounding areas. The rezoning must meet one of the two criteria described. Of the two criteria, the proposed zoning does not correct an error in the original zoning text or map. As a result, the rezoning can only be approved if it addresses a changing condition, trend, or fact affecting the property and surrounding area. Third criteria to be considered is following a decision on the first two, is whether the proposed rezoning is consistent with achieving the goals and objectives outlined in the city's comprehensive plan. So it's the responsibility of the petitioner to provide information justifying the request of the Planning Commission. We have zoning definitions. The RT two zoning district is intended to provide, it's it's to provide low-density one- and two-unit dwellings generally located in the grid development pattern along but directly related complementary uses such as garages, garden sheds, that type of thing. They're requesting that the property be rezoned to B two, which is to provide for a wide range of vehicle-oriented businesses and service uses, as well as a limited industrial activities adjacent to major roadways that provide access and exposure. So we need to decide, or the commission needs to decide, does the request, request to rezoning meet the criteria for a changing condition or trend? Staff would recommend approval of the rezoning request for the following reasons. The city's comprehensive plan designates the property for low-density residential land uses. The rezoning would allow for off-street employee parking. Comprehensive plan does not specifically address off-street parking in residential areas, but in the past has allowed for parking, off-street parking for public assembly types of uses, schools, churches, that type of thing. Number two, the rezoning would be compatible with the area land uses and zoning districts. Off-street parking for small, for a small number of employees would be suitable land use in that location. Three, the subject is, the subject is less, subject property is less than the minimum lot size required in the zoning district, which is eight thousand two hundred fifty square feet. Single-family residence would be really difficult to construct on the property considering setbacks, topography, the private sanitary sewer line, and then also the odd shape of the lot. There is an existing tree buffer between the residence to the north and their proposed parking area. So I'll just point that out. That's right in this area, there's a tree line. Currently, staff from South Point are parking on North German Street when the parking lot's full, which makes North German Street between Seventh North and Eighth North Street on German Street congested at certain times of the day. The applicant has stated that if the new parking area were to be constructed, he would direct staff to park down in this off-street parking area rather than on North German Street. Staff's knowledge, there's never been an inquiry regarding the development of the property for residential purposes since it was acquired by MinDOT in nineteen fifty-nine. So the change in condition is that the property was now available from MinDOT and was in a condition that does not allow for traditional residential uses. We believe those factors are evidence of a changing condition, trend, or fact. We do have in the staff report three conditions. I would like to add a fourth. So the first proposed condition is the petitioner shall prepare a plat of the property and have the plat approved by the city council. The petitioner is aware of that condition, I think is in the process of of doing that. The prop, number two, the property uses shall be limited to employee parking and for snow storage. Number three, the property shall not be conveyed separately from the South Point Federal Credit Union property located at seven oh six North German Streets. What we're doing is tying the parking stalls directly to the use, which is the South Point property. And then lastly, the fourth condition I'd like to add is that the petitioner maintain the screening that is along the north side of that property as a buffer from the residential uses to the north. We have six attachments. First one is the rezoning petition. Second one is the site location map. So here we have Johnson Field and Park, Community Center, South Point, and this is the subject property. So if you're on fourteen, then you have to look down the hill to see it. We have a zoning map of the area, a site map, and then we also have some ground-level photos of the property. So these photos are taken from the east looking up towards South Point, and then this one's from the alley looking down towards North Spring Street. Like all of our other land use decisions, there is a findings of fact that goes along with this type of request. And as we've talked about in the past, we, if you have that in your packet, and if you had a chance to read it, we can either go through each one of those, or you can accept the staff's response to those findings of facts and accept those findings of facts as well. So what would you like, what would the?
What does the commission want you to do? Finding of facts after we close the business portion of the meeting and get all the questions and answers under the way, or do the finding of facts and ask your questions then? In the past, we've done it after then we've closed the portion, but I'm open to doing it right now. This seems pretty cut and dry.
I would agree.
Okay.
Sure. I agree.
That sounds fine.
I do have one question before we move to the finding of facts. You did mention in your conditions that this would be used for employee parking and snow room storage only. So we are not putting in the condition that this can, cannot be used for outside storage? Not that, you know, they would park a trailer or a parade float for three weeks or four weeks, or?
Yeah, well, what we did was, the condition says the property shall be limited only to employee parking and snow storage. So what that infers is that nothing else?
Nothing else is parked there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, go ahead. Do you want me to read you the question?
I have one question, too. The tree line that you suggested that would be maintained, who owns those trees right now?
So I'm understanding that the property, new property owner, South Point, is the one who owns those trees.
Okay. So I think it's the need to continue to have a barrier of some sort, and I think the regulations say trees or fence or something.
Screening is the.
Screening, right. So the neighbors on the backside have no say in what that screening will be, right?
No, and we would also, if this were, let's say there were nothing there, for instance, we would allow either type. So you could do screening with trees or vegetation, or you could do screening with a fence.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Do you have to do screening?
In this type of situation, yeah.
Okay.
Is the screening that's there sufficient?
Yeah.
So if it's not touched because it's not part of the parking lot, it passes muster?
Right. It's supposed to be eighty percent opacity.
Okay.
Meaning you can't see through it.
Any other questions before we begin? Okay. In your opinion, does the proposed amendment correct an error in the original text or map?
Staff responded, no, the proposed amendment does not correct an error in the zoning text or map, zoning text or map, it should say.
In your opinion, does the proposed amendment address needs arising from a change condition, changing condition, trend, or fact affecting the subject property and surrounding area?
Staff responded, yes, the change in condition is that the property is now available from the Minnesota Department of Transportation, and the condition of the lot, lot that was sold does not allow for the traditional residential development.
In your opinion, is the proposed amendment consistent with achieving the goals and objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan?
Staff responded, yes, the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The plan acknowledges the uniqueness of this lot and its limitations for development with this lot for residential uses.
That's a very short finding of facts form, but I kind of like it.
Shortest one we have. I would remind you just, for the next one, the conditional use permit one that's going to be coming up, that's a much longer findings of fact. And if you have read that before and agree with the staff's findings, you can accept that whole document, or we can go through them individually.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions or changes or comments? I'm assuming there's someone with a green T-shirt there. I don't know if he has anything he would like to say.
No T-shirt.
Okay. Do you have something you'd like to say?
No, I'm just, I'm Jay Gustanzik. I'm the president and CEO at South Point.
Okay.
So if you have any questions, John did a great job of presenting.
Okay. He usually does. Thank you.
I guess I'm just gonna ask, are you okay with the fourth condition that he brought up today that wasn't in our packet, accepting it with the screening? That's, that's okay?
The screening that exists today is forty feet high.
Okay.
You can't see through it. I did speak with the neighbor, Marlene Drill.
Drill.
And she appreciated the conversation. She doesn't have any concerns. Just wanted to make sure she understood what we planned to do with the property.
Good.
Wonderful.
If there are no questions or any further comments, I'm looking for a motion.
One comment. I'm gonna abstain from voting as I'm on the community action committee for the South Point, so don't wanna have any conflict of interest.
Using, okay. Thank you.
Hearing, nobody coming forward. I'm gonna offer a motion to close the public hearing and recommend approval with conditions with a petition of Jay Gustanzik, CEO of South Point Federal Credit Union, to rezon property from RT dash two, traditional neighborhood, single and two-family residence district, to B two, general business district, and legally described on the zoning petition.
One second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, no favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. When is this appearing at the council?
August sixth.
Okay.
At four thirty.
I'm waiting for my computer to load. Here it goes. Okay, next item on the agenda for public hearing is Riverbend Education District Conditional Use Permit Application.
All right. This conditional use permit application is to allow the Riverbend Education District to provide educational properties zoned B two. Again, that's the general business zoning district. The applicant is Charlie Vols from MLA Architects, and the property owner is Eric Bodie on behalf of LP G P LLC. The legal description is Lot Ten, Block Seventy Eight, south of Center Street, and the street address is twelve seventeen South Broadway. The property is located between Twelfth and Thirteenth South Streets and east of South Broadway. It's the old Nicholson's Athletic Building that we're talking about here. Deadline for a decision on this application is September seventh, two thousand and twenty four. The current land use designation is commercial. Surrounding land uses to the north are commercial and low-density residential. To the east, low-density residential. To the south, commercial slash public and semi-public. And then to the west is commercial and low-density residential. Again, the zoning designation is B two, the general business district. Surrounding zoning to the north is B two and RT two. To the east, RT two, and then to the south, B two. To the west, B two and RT two. Current site and land uses include an office in the front, vacant, and then storage space. Current land uses in the area to the north are office, commercial and residential. To the east, residential. To the south, offices, commercial and semi-public. And then to the west, offices and residential. Again, notice was provided to all property owners within three hundred and fifty feet of the subject property and published in the journal on July thirteenth. To date, staff has not had any comments regarding this application. So the purpose of the B two zoning district, again, is to provide for a wide range of vehicle-oriented businesses and service uses, as well as limited industrial activities adjacent to major roadways that provide access and exposures, exposure. Schools, pre-K through twelve, is a permitted use in the B two zoning district with a conditional use permit. The proposed building location was previously occupied by Nicholson Athletic Company and since has been used for office space and storage space. The applicant is proposing to construct three classrooms and associated space in the rear portion of the building. Entrances to this space would be provided at the front and rear of the building. And then the total building area, sorry, the office space in the front of the building that exists today will still remain. Total building area is seven thousand four hundred forty-five square feet, and the total lot area is our typical grid lot, which is eight thousand two hundred fifty square feet. Permitted uses in the B two zoning district include a combination of public and institutional and business, other business land uses. With the conditional use, a wider range of public and institutional business and industrial uses are permitted. Schools, pre-K through twelve, are permitted with conditional use in most residential business and industrial zoning districts, actually all of them. The Riverbend Education District currently owns and operates from out of the building to the south of the subject property located at thirteen fifteen South Broadway. They've been operating in that location since June third, two thousand and eight. The application provides the following information on the project. There will be minimal exterior impact. A new door will be added on South Broadway or the front side of the property, and on the rear side of the property, an overhead door will be replaced with a new wall, and wood stairs will be replaced with concrete steps. There will be approximately thirty-one students and staff that will use the facility at one time. The property does not have any onsite parking spaces. So in order to recommend approval of the permit, the commission will need to determine that the request complies with the review criteria found in section two point four D four of Appendix A of the city code. This criteria can also be found in the findings of fact that's provided with the staff report. The planning commission and the city council must make affirmative actions on all criteria listed in the findings of fact in order to grant the conditional use. The applicant has the burden of proof to show that all the criteria above have been satisfied. We have, again, six attachments. We have the application and site building plan that is here. Here are some photos that they took of the front of the building and then the rear of the building that they also submitted with their application. They have their proposed building plans. Sorry, these are a little larger. Here, and the architect actually is is present today, so I'm sure he'd be willing to speak on that if you have specific questions on the building plans. Let's see. We have the site location map, so it gives you its proximity in relation to other areas of the city. We have a site map, ground-level photographs, and then the staff completed findings of fact. So staff's recommendation would be to recommend approval of this conditional use permit application based on the information and staff's responses found in the findings of fact form. We would propose three conditions with this application. One is that the applicant property owner will pay the cost to record the permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Two, no exterior storage will be permitted on the property. And three, that employees and students, it should say, and students at this location would continue to park their vehicles at thirteen fifteen South Broadway. There's two potential motions, one to recommend approval and one to recommend denial of this application. And that concludes the staff report. I believe the superintendent of the school district is here, as well as the architect, Mr. Vols, and I'm sure he'll be willing to answer any questions you might have.
I have one question for you, John. There still is street parking there?
In front on Broadway, correct.
Does the condition for, since there's no parking on, available on the property, does that condition extend to Broadway?
Well, that's public parking, so we really can't.
I understand that.
We can't force them not to park there. But we would request that any, any associated teachers, students park at the Riverbend School District Building on thirteen fifteen. So I would assume they'd probably want to use it maybe for deliveries or something like that, but they also have the alley to do those types of things.
Okay.
If I'm understanding correctly, it's just that this is an existing building. You're trying to retrofit it.
Yep.
Say if it was a new construction building, you would have to probably provide some sort of parking if it was a newly constructed, but being you're adapting to the existing grid work and building within, nothing's changing physically.
Yes. Yes, correct. In addition, it's sort of a unique situation where the larger building where they, their main office is, is less than a half a block away, where they have sufficient parking currently and would be able to accommodate these additional students as well.
The larger building, which is primarily occupied in winter.
Yeah.
That's my point for the parking. And then I have one other question, is the apartment upstairs staying vacant? Or is there a residence?
No, there's a residence up there, I believe that's.
And that is still a residence?
Yep.
Okay.
And the, the office space that's in the front of the building will be office space for the school functions?
Separate.
No, that's an office space for, for whoever's in there now?
Did you want to step up to the microphone and address any questions, please? State your name and address, thank you.
I'm Doug Hazen, I'm the executive director at Riverbend, so superintendent.
Okay.
My address for where I live, or?
No, no, you, the school is fine, 1315.
Yep.
South Broadway, okay, fine, thank you. And you said that the office space in front is going to be staff office?
It's, it's not ours, we didn't, we are not leasing that. That is owned, or leased by Family Planning, and they blew a hole out and are using it to the left. So they've already done construction in there and they, they have that. So we had to build a hallway to go around their, their business.
Okay.
So the main access for students and staff be from the front or from the back?
It will be from the front, the vans will pull up there. All the students coming, come in vans because of their disability levels.
So the drop off will be on Broadway?
Yep, because they need access for the lifts, for the wheelchair lifts.
Yep.
Students don't drive.
None of the students in this program can drive.
Okay, so primarily there's going to be handicap parking? Or is, are you reserving a space like bus parking, or how is that working?
No, it's literally three or four minutes for them to drop off. This is a very small program, so they just drop off before any of the businesses are going and they pick up at three o'clock and they're out of there by 3:05.
What if there's no parking space out front?
We will work around that because we have other options.
That's my.
Yeah, we have other options for that.
That's my question with the parking, if you're not reserving spaces out front and you have a van, you can't.
Family planning isn't running at that time.
You're going to be driving around the block a lot.
Correct, but family planning isn't running at that time of the day. And we talked to them and they said, we're never there at that time. So there's plenty of parking. Yep, that's a good question.
So would there be concern about, about teachers and such taking up all of the limited parking that is available there on Broadway, or you don't think that that will be an issue?
My staff will park at Riverbend's main, because we already paid to plow that. I'm not, I don't want to pay for more plowing, so they'll park at 1315 and walk over. It's a, it's 418 steps, they can walk it.
Okay.
So are these students all wheelchair-bound?
They're not wheelchair-bound, we don't have currently any students, they're autistic.
Okay. I wondered what the program was.
Yeah, they're autistic, we could have a student that is wheelchair, but we've never had one.
Okay. Questions?
Question?
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions for the city?
I guess I do have one more question. So I think in the materials, you mentioned that the kids would be using the playground across the street every now and then. Is there a concern about, and I don't want to be hyper safety here, about them crossing that side street? Do we need to, you know, do we need to have a crossing there? Or is that not something that's going to happen real often? I just... I'm sorry?
Could you step up to the microphone, please, and answer the question so the public can hear your response?
I'm Charlie Vowles with the Architects, MLA Architects.
Step a little closer to the microphone.
Speaking to the staff, it didn't sound like a concern. It's very small groups and it's with paraprofessionals and all that, so very monitored.
Okay, any other, did you get your question completely answered, okay? Thank you.
John, who's currently responsible for plowing that, those parking spots? Is that city or is that?
On Broadway?
Yeah.
That's state, Minda.
Minda Plaza.
Yeah. I would note, too, that, so you all know, just whenever we have a site come in, whenever we have a project come in like this, we have a site plan committee that meets weekly when projects come in, which includes myself, Mr. Zabel, Dave Schnobrick, the city engineer, and the utility engineer. And we take a look at all, try to take a look at all of those issues that might come up with any kind of site that, that we're taking a look at to address them before it gets to, to your, in front of you.
Okay. Thank you. If, if there's no other, no other concerns, I mean, I would like a motion to close public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Second?
A second?
Motion, second, to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Wait, one second, we have to.
Do the finding of facts.
Do the findings of fact before you do the, the motion to approve the.
Pardon me?
Request. Do the findings of fact before doing a motion to approve the, the conditional use permit.
I wasn't doing a motion to approve, I was going to ask you to do the.
Got it.
I was just doing the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. I know I have problems with closing the public hearing. Finding of facts, John.
Now, you, you have the option, if you've read through them and agree with staff's findings, you can accept them as is, or we can go through each one and provide more information.
Has everyone read the finding of facts?
Yes.
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 Yes. Is anyone, is everyone okay with bypassing the reading of the public of the finding of facts?
I'm okay with it.
I agree.
I'll make a motion to accept the finding of facts as presented by the staff.
A second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the finding of facts?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then I would be looking for a motion on.
I'll make a motion to recommend the approval with conditions for the application of Charles Vowles, MLA Architects Incorporated, and Eric Bodie on behalf of LP G P L L C to allow the Riverbend School District to provide educational programs on property zoned B2, General Business Zoning District on the property legally described as Lot 10, Block 78, south of Center and located at 1217 South Broadway.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is approved. When does this go to the council, the 6th?
This also goes August 6th.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is reports from the city council decisions concerning planning commission matters in July of 2024.
Okay, so at the July 2nd meeting, the council approved the small area plans. But I would note, there is a little bit of a misprint in the journal that kind of led the audience maybe to, or led the readers maybe to believe that we were promoting changing downtown parking and traffic. We had a number of phone calls, letters to the editor, all that kind of thing. We did, staff did, talked to those folks that wrote the letters to the editor to clarify what we were actually talking about as an option to consider when the street is reconstructed 10, 20 years down the road. And then we also talked to any other folks. We had one letter come in and then we had another phone call come in and talked to those folks through that process and what we were actually approving. So I hope that settled some of the dust on that, but I wanted you to be aware of that.
Was there any, like, relevant information that came out of those discussions? Did they look like what they were seeing, or was it big concerns, what was?
The biggest concern was changing traffic to two-way and then parallel parking. Those are the biggest concerns.
I must say I got three phone calls myself, which I found odd. I don't know why people know that they should, could call me. But I did, and I said, no, 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 it was just a consideration and an option that if we decided to, and then I did refer him to your office again, too. I don't know if anybody did call you, but the parking, people having to learn how to parallel park again was a real terror for a lot of these people.
Right.
Great concern, yeah.
Yeah, so other insight, one gentleman that had called me, had worked actually up on Niclet Avenue. And so he was, he had worked, he had a shop in, sorry, Niclet Mall, I should say, where it was pedestrian only, and talked about that and how that affected the Niclet Mall and how it did work or didn't work, those types of things. So there was some neat insight there, you know, when we talked about more pedestrian-friendly in the downtown area, he had some really good insight being a business owner down there.
So was the consensus that people wanted parallel, wanted the, the two-way or not?
No.
Absolutely don't?
No, absolutely not.
It's a change.
I just felt that the people, the couple of people that called me just were adamant that they, because of the double parking of vehicles and trucks and stuff, just didn't know how, they were, they were like panicked, how would they get past?
Right.
That's true, yeah, so.
Something to consider, further down the road, if, if Minnesota's ever reconstructed or when it's reconstructed, then we take a, a much deeper look into it and, and analyze it much further.
Jill, what are your thoughts, having a business downtown of having two-way versus one-way? Not to push you on the spot, but I've heard from some other businesses downtown that they wanted to have two-way, so I'm surprised that it was so adamant against.
I have heard that argument that one-way traffic is not good for the businesses downtown.
Yeah.
And that, that a business, I'm not a business owner, this is just someone mentioning it, right? But that two-way traffic is better for the businesses.
Yeah, and I.
In, in studies, is what I've been told, that's second-hand knowledge.
Right.
Yeah, interesting, that's what I've also heard from some of the business owners and operators downtown, so I'm interested to, to hear.
Yeah, I think if we would ever approach that in the future, we would definitely do a canvas of the whole downtown, talk to all the business owners, make sure we had everybody's voices heard on it in order to make a decision.
Yeah, downtown parking is definitely a.
Hot topic.
Sure is.
Mm-hmm.
The second item in, in July on the 2nd, July 2nd, was the council did accept the highest-ranked implementation priorities from the planning commission. We then sent those to the strategic planning folks, and they've already actually incorporated them with their questions that they're asking the strategic plan groups. Now, what they're going to be using those for in the strategic planner, how do we take actual steps towards achieving these strategies and, and laying that roadmap out? So that's kind of nice. On July 6th, you may have heard about this, the city council approved, setting aside $160,000 to move the EDA house from 320 North Broadway to 1007 North Minnesota Street with the idea that there is a developer that has entered a purchase agreement, entered into a purchase agreement with the EDA to purchase that property, they would like that house removed that's on the property. And we thought that was potentially an opportunity to save a single-family home, talk with the contractors who can do that type of work and move it to 1007, which is a vacant lot, 1007 North Minnesota Street, a tax-forfeited vacant lot. So in addition to that, that house, we had, we had the okay from the city attorney to work with the current renters of the house, who have been renting that for six or seven years and are looking to purchase their first home. So we, they gave us the okay to, to sell them the home once it's moved over to 1007. We've also talked with their lenders as well, and they're okay with this process. Challenges right now, we just had a, we just had a walkthrough yesterday. And the timeline that we need to get this done in is very tight. And a lot of it depends on a few contractors, the people who move the house and then also the people who do the foundation. So it's a very tight, tight timeline, we hope we can get it all done, but we want to see that moving forward. So those were the two, three items that went to the council in July.
Is the city responsible for the hole, or isn't there a basement under that? Or who fills the hole, or what happens?
We would have the purchaser of that property at the EDA site be responsible for taking care of the hole and pulling out the foundation.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And that's it, from me.
That it? There is no heritage preservation report, they did not meet?
Nope.
Nope. Is there any other business that needs to come before the commission? Hearing done, meeting adjourned, thank you very much.